Late start, but we appreciate you all being here in attendance. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 16th. It is 10 minutes after 6:00. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Mayor DeVeard?
Aye.
Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Justin Jordan with Real Life Ministries. If you will please join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us another day and opportunity for our council to come together tonight. God, we know that you've created government to allow goodness to flourish and to confront evil. We ask God that you would give wisdom and direction to the council to make decisions for goodness to continue to flourish throughout Meridian. We thank you for the blessing that you've poured out on this city and continue to pour out. We thank you for the citizens and we thank you just for the ability to live here and raise our families. Be in this meeting tonight and, like I said, may wisdom and goodness flourish. We pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Pastor Justin. Okay, item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
We have one amendment to the agenda on the action items. Item 9I, we're going to move up to 9A and take that one first with regards to our fire department.
Mr. Borton? They're on a call right now, so they said to leave it as is.
Leave it as is. That takes a little more precedence. All right, well, then, never mind. Of the agenda, there are no other changes. So, Madam Mayor, I'd move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item five. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It does not appear that anyone has signed up for item number five this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
There are no changes to it, so I'd move that the consent agenda be approved and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Bearing none, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item eight, I have a plaque here for a longtime community member who has been serving in a couple of different functions, but tonight we'd like to recognize his dedicated service to our Board of Adjustment. So I'm going to move down to the podium for a moment. Yes. So, Tom Sauer is not an unfamiliar face at City Hall. Tom and Karen have volunteered in our parks, certainly is an advocate for pickleball. For any of you who know what pickleball is, there is quite the movement for that. They have sat at our front desk welcoming citizens as they come into City Hall. He has served on our SWAC committee and for Mr. Neri, the last eight years?
Yes.
For the last eight years has served as our citizen representative on the Board of Adjustment. What I really appreciate with Tom is he's kind of a no-nonsense, give me the facts and let's get this cleared up. Your service to the community has been sincerely appreciated. You have gone above and beyond and it's with great honor that I recognize you for your years of service. It says the City of Meridian has greatly benefited from your valuable gift of time and your expertise. Meridian is more vibrant community because of your service and we thank you and hope this small token of our appreciation shows you how much you really have been appreciated.
Well, thank you. I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure for the last eight years working with such fine people and I've been looking for the bad penny and I haven't found it yet. So this is a great city to live in and it's a great city to volunteer for because they do so much for us and they take care of us. So I appreciate this. Thank you very much, Mayor Tammy. Thank you again.
Okay, item nine is under action items. 9A is a resolution 18-2115. These, this appointment is appointing a new member, Patricia Matthews, to our Meridian Transportation Commission. Council, I had interviewed with the Chair of the Transportation Commission, Mr. Ballard, and we bring this name forward as the recommendation to fill seat eight. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I didn't see anything in our packet, any information about this individual. Can you share with us a little bit about their background and experience?
Yes, Ms. Matthews has been an employee of ITD in the past. She's also served as an insurance adjuster that has gone out on scenes of accidents and assessed some of the problems that have been in the way. She's got a real passion for transportation-related issues and feels that she can bring her problem-solving skills to the commission as well as her expertise in some of these different areas.
Okay, great. There aren't any questions, other questions? I move we approve resolution 18-2115.
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Leave it at that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Is Ms. Matthews here tonight? I don't, I didn't see her. Okay. Item B is resolution 18-2116. This is a resolution appointing Judy Alt to seat seven. This is actually adding an additional seat to the Historical Preservation Commission. We had six. This will make it to an odd number, which is preferred. When we added the youth member, it added an even number. There is great passion by Ms. Alt. She has done a lot of volunteer work at the Basque Museum. She's done a lot of the digital cataloging and those kind of things. She brings an expertise to the commission that hasn't been there and Blaine and I felt that it would be certainly a great asset bringing this to the HPC. This is also a reappointment of Blaine Johnson to seat three and, or J.C. Jones to seat three and Blaine Johnson to seat two. So I would stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Little Roberts?
If there are no questions, I move that we support resolution 18-2116 and I'm excited to see J.C. Jones and Blaine Johnson returning. They've done a great job.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item C is under our Meridian Arts Commission and approval of the Park Identity and Public Art Project. I'll turn this over to Hillary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stand before council today to let you know that the Arts Commission and Parks Commission have worked together to approve two requests for proposals. We essentially want your approval of these before we put them out into the public and before we even start soliciting for proposals from artists. So we decided to, upon your approval, release two RFPs at the same time for two park identity art projects, one in Champion Park and one in Renaissance Park. So the model is very similar to the model of Heroes Park. It almost, the dates were very, very similar as well. We ended up giving them a little more time to submit proposals in case there was a roster artist interested in submitting proposals for both. That would take them more time. Essentially, we would aim for these to be FY '19 projects. And I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
If there aren't any questions, I would move that we approve the Park Identity Public Art Project RFPs and direct that they be issued as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thanks, Hillary.
Item 9D is a request for reconsideration of Tanner Creek subdivision, H. 2018-0023. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have a request from the applicant to reconsider the decision made in the Tanner Creek application. That was before you in September. The applicant has requested additional opportunity to present additional evidence. That doesn't really comply with our ordinance, which requires to point out a legal deficiency in the decision that was originally made. Hadn't really raised that. He simply was wanting an opportunity to provide additional facts to the record. It's our opinion that is not necessary unless you desire that, but otherwise you can stand on the findings that you originally made. But we would recommend that you direct the findings back to staff for more specific findings to be included in the findings document. The findings document does lay out the decision that was made by this council and the reasons that were done, but it refers back to the record for those findings. And for a court's perspective, we need those specific findings that were in the record from the discussion you had back in September to be placed in the document. So we'd recommend you remand it simply for some clarity to the findings and clarification of those and then you could have it back on a future agenda for approval. But we wouldn't recommend approving the request for reconsideration.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Counsel, any comments, questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
If there aren't any comments, I would move that we grant the request for reconsideration for Tanner Creek subdivision for that limited purposes of articulating from within the existing record the specifics necessary to place into some amended findings of fact and conclusions of law as suggested by legal counsel. I think it's not only the legal way to do it, but I think it's also most appropriate for an applicant to see those specifics within the findings of fact and conclusions of law and then make a decision whether they, how they want to proceed, so. A second?
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9E is a public hearing for H. 2018-0103. Just wanted to talk about our public hearing process first in terms of, we have our staff that gives an overview of the application and some of the staff findings and conditions. We then ask the developer to present their application. They are given 10 minutes to do so. At that point, we will open it up for public comment. Public is offered three minutes to give testimony and at the end of public comment, after everyone has had a chance to testify one time, we ask the applicant to come and give final remarks and to answer any questions that were raised during the public hearing. It gives then counsel an opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or any of those that have provided public comment. I just also would note that there is a public record that has been available to not only the public, but city council that gives a lot of the agency comments, written comments from our public as well, which has already been reviewed by council as well as planning and zoning meetings that have happened prior to. So with that, I will turn this over to staff.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So before you this evening is a development agreement modification for Calderwood Business Park. You can see the zoning map here. A portion of this is zoned LO further away from Meridian Road. The parcels along Meridian Road are zoned CG. And pull up the aerial here and kind of see what's going on in the area. So as most of you know, the Dutch Bros was installed there, constructed there earlier this year. There is a care facility across from Blackspur Way, on the east side of Blackspur Way, adjacent to this development. So starting out, the applicant wishes to modify the original development agreement to allow for minor vehicle repair within the development. With the current DA, council approved a conceptual development plan. A conceptual development plan and specifically disallowed several uses that would otherwise have been allowed within the CG and LO zoning districts. Minor vehicle repair was one of the uses specifically prohibited within the development due to the close proximity of the residential uses. Bill Parsons worked on this project back in 2015 and I believe he personally was the one that suggested that certain uses be limited on this property. This time, in going through the process, we were relatively reliant and hoping that we would get some feedback from the residents adjacent, specifically the care facility that's across Blackspur Way, as to whether or not they were in support of or against several of the uses. Going back through this, the previously approved concept plan depicts three office pads, three commercial pads, and one drive-through pad. Obviously, the drive-through pad now is where the Dutch Bros is. The drive-through has since been developed. The concept plan is not being modified as part of this application. However, the applicant wants to be allowed to have minor vehicle repair allowed within the development agreement. The original DA limits the uses in the development agreement because of the proximity to sensitive residential areas, such as the residential care facility to the east. Staff is of the opinion that the CG portion of the development is far enough, approximately 193 feet, from the care facility that allowing the remainder of the previously prohibited uses will not adversely impact the residential areas surrounding the development. In addition to the 193-foot distance between the two uses, there's also a drive aisle, two five-foot landscape buffers, several buildings, and a public street between them. There is a residential property that abuts the south side of the proposed minor vehicle repair use, but the overhead doors will face to the north and the applicant is required to install a 20-foot, 25-foot landscape buffer on the south side of their structure up against that residential zone property, so any sound impact should be minimal. Proposal to change the previously prohibited uses as now permitted only applies in the CG zoning designation. The previously prohibited uses remain as prohibited in the LO zoning designation. So going back to aerial, there's several uses, and I can go through those, that staff feels should all be permitted, not just the minor vehicle repair, but they would only be permitted in the CG zone portion. They would not be permitted along the boundary. Lastly, that was a couple of things that we've since, since writing the staff report have become aware of. M was a provision that we added to the development agreement that's no longer applicable. We've fixed that and I would like to apologize for an error in the staff report. My brain wasn't working Friday afternoon, so grammatically, I want to correct something. My intention here in E was to allow for all of the remaining uses in the CG, but not in the LO zoning district. And the way I worded that is kind of goofy. Following uses shall only be allowed within the CG zoning district portion of the development except for the following. And so intention is to rewrite that so that all of those uses are allowed in the CG, not LO. Confident I can do it correctly this time. Staff is recommending approval and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you. Josh, counsel, any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Josh, in the, in the application packet, you have this condition with stricken is except for the following uses, which are prohibited. You have that stricken and the remainder, so.
Yeah, so the, the strikeout didn't come over when I, I pulled the staff report and we can talk about.
But the staff report link, that's correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, any other questions at this time? The applicant here. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Richard Wilmot, 1119 East State Street, Eagle, Idaho.
Thank you, Richard. And if you'll note on the screen in front of you, there should be time listed.
There is.
So you can track your time allowed.
I'll try to be brief. Counsel, thank you for your time this evening. As Josh had mentioned, we're asking for a development agreement modification to, for this property. We have gone through a number of steps in terms of the property itself. We have, we've completed and have an approved property boundary adjustment to create this parcel, which is effectively going to be a new Lot 7, Block 1. It was a combination of a variety of parcels that we've since achieved the property boundary adjustment. And given that this property is on Meridian Road, we feel the way that the rest of the development has gone, it just makes sense to allow the full uses that are allowed within the CG zone to be allowed on this property, which previously weren't before. And so with that, also as Josh had mentioned, we have a use that is compliant with all of the requirements of the CG zone. The one thing to clarify, though, currently we're showing a 20-foot setback and I want to make sure that that's in fact the case and not a 25 along the south. Is that?
No, it's 25.
It is 25 for sure. Okay. So if that's the case, we can make that adjustment to our current concept plan that was submitted with the, with the application. Beyond that, we agree once, once item M is stricken from the report, we agree with everything in the report. There was nothing that was adverse to our opinion of how it should be approved. So we, we're in agreement, assuming that item M is stricken from the report. With that, I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Clerk, have there been citizens to sign up to testify?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In addition to the applicant who just spoke, Billy Green Jr. was also listed in favor, wanting to testify.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Billy Green Jr., 17725 Katy Freeway, Houston, Texas.
Billy, if you can pull that mic as close to you as possible.
All right. Do I need to repeat it?
No, we got you.
Okay. Actually, this minor use approval is actually a Christian Brothers Automotive use. We've been around for several years, since 1982. We have 190 locations in 26 states. We've already been a part of the community. We have another location. We love being a part of this neighborhood and we are excited about potential additional location. I don't think we've had any complaints or adverse situations at our existing location, which is also adjacent to residential use. And we just would like to continue and add an additional location.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. No other signups, Madam Mayor.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? You see, none.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Move we close the public hearing on H. 2018-0103.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 9E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Move that we approve item E, H. 2018-0103, for the modified development agreement. As noted in the October 16th staff report, in conditions 5.1E and then 5.1M will be stricken as well.
Madam Mayor, quickly, so item E wouldn't be stricken. Item M?
M is stricken. E is as.
I've altered it on the staff report on your screen to how it should read. So however you want to make that motion, but this is how it should read, so. That's not what the staff report originally said. I've tweaked it on the screen so you can kind of see what the intention was.
Madam Mayor, the one in our packet says just that, the one I'm looking at. So at any rate, we're going to get to the same end result. What's on the screen and M is stricken is the motion as part of the approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment from staff? Josh, are we good? Any questions?
No, they're good.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Okay, item 9F is a public hearing continue from September 11th, 2018 for Costco wholesale, H. 2018-0066. I will open this with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is the development agreement modification for the Costco site. This project was last heard by the city council on July 24th. At that meeting, council voted to continue the project in order to allow the applicant time to work with the neighbors to come up with a building design more compatible with adjacent residential areas, taking into consideration adjacent residential areas, taking into consideration feedback from neighbors presented at the public hearing. The applicant and the design team held two additional neighborhood meetings, August 14th and September 11th, at which they worked with the neighbors to come up with revised building elevations that have more of a residential feel with earth toned colors rather than industrial with gray tones. There's a couple tweaks made to the site plan, as shown, and I'll just run through these quickly. Materials for the building consist of stone, brick, stucco, glass, steel, and architectural metal siding panels. The project was renoticed for tonight's hearing, and notices were mailed out to everyone within 1,000 feet of the boundary of the site at the direction of city council at the last hearing. I'll just run through some additional drawings the applicant submitted. The structure is subject to the design standards listed in the Architectural Standards Manual and will be reviewed for compliance with such with the designer view application submitted with the Certificate of Zoning Compliance application. Since the council hearing on July 24th, written testimony has been received from Justin McMurty, John Wright, Emily Piscon, Jane Albert, Tom Callison, and Dinah Gallo. Staff will stand for any questions. I believe the applicants here would present.
Okay. Counsel, any questions at this time?
Right now.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Peter Khan, Costco Wholesale, 999 Lake Drive, Visco, Washington.
Thank you.
Nice to be here in front of you again. I think we have a good story to tell. We last met, as staff mentioned, on July 24th, and we held two community meetings. I want to thank the community. They were very, very well organized, had lots of good ideas. I feel that we worked really hard to incorporate as many of those as we thought we could, or worked with cohesive design that we all ended up with. I want to particularly thank Jane Albert, who was one of the community leaders and spokespersons for the community, and Denise Hansen-Lefever, who also was instrumental in organizing the community and getting their feedback and making sure we at Costco got that feedback. So we have a design that's quite a bit different from what we showed you on the 24th. We moved away from the tech industrial design, and we've come back, I think, with something as staff mentioned, is warmer, more fitting for the residential area. The comments that we've gotten from the community, most of them were favorable. As you know, you can't please everybody all the time, but I think we came a long way in pleasing most of the people that participated in the process. And we'll walk you through the design now. With me tonight are Steve Bullock from MG2, Charlie Eckblad from MG2, he was the principal designer on it, and then Mark Wiseman, our landscape architect. With that, I'll turn it over to Charlie, who was the principal designer, as I said, and he'll walk you through the design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let's go to the taller one. Charlie Eckblad, 1101 Second Avenue, Seattle, Washington, 98101. Do we have the submitted presentation, or should I just go off of what we have here? Thank you. Yes. And if not, I can go off of what we had, but. So as it's been discussed, we really wanted to focus on both site design and building design, and how those can really come together. And so we focused on, heard from the neighbors on the site, they want amenity spaces for pedestrians, connectivity with the Chindon Road and Ten Mile, and then also buffers for the buildings along the Costco South and West facades. And so here on the site plan, we see, or begin to see, the nodes that are proposed throughout the site and focusing on that connectivity. The Costco site amongst the surrounding land, the buffers between the south and then the west sides of the building, and then talking about how site design, landscape design, and building design comes into one. We heard the words pergola. We heard the words, kind of creating this community spaces and amenities. And so we wanted to create something in the site, but then also have it speak to the entry canopy and then also other parts of the building that pedestrians interact with, and really focusing on that pedestrian scale, making what is really a rather large building get down in scale and really where the pedestrians interact. And so this pergola design that is seen throughout the site is also seen on the entry canopy, and so bringing in those warm colors of the materials. And so we have cultured stone as a primary material on the columns. Secondary materials are half-height, smooth-faced CMU, and then soldier coursing and trellis materials, creating these details that, again, are bringing the scale of a large building down to the pedestrian level. So this shot begins to show, here we have the doors down. We call it an enclosed canopy. So that is what it would look like for, say, two to three months of the year, but really, when the weather cooperates, as the weather permits, they're going to be open. It's going to be inviting for people to come through all entrances, not just the main slider doors. And those are, even in the winter months, if the weather permits, those will be open and pedestrians can go through all of those entrances and openings between the columns. Again, talking about bringing the site design into the building and creating these pedestrian nodes, we wanted to create a space that connected with the parking lot, but then also the entry canopy, so if someone gets a hot dog, they now have pergola and seats and benches that they can go enjoy that and communicate with one another. So we had a lot of communication and conversation about the, creating areas of focus and wanted to break up the facade, but not by just continuing to attach things to the building. And so pulling these pergola and trellis features off of the building into landscape islands, separating the buffer, the cars, from the pedestrians, and creating more of a experience along the building was a big focus of the redesign and something that wasn't really shown in the original, but through the communication with the neighbors. We really wanted to create those experiences and create those spaces. The backside is, so this is the south side of the building, south and west side, and it's really meant to be modest. It continues the same language of the rest of the building, same materiality, same corner treatments with the cultured stone mixed with the smooth face and continuing that trellis. But we wanted this to be modest. It has a big buffer on the south side from any of the multifamily residential, but that's just, that's what it wanted to be, and so that's what we let it be. And then continuing to the east, on the north side, we have those landscape islands pulled off from the walkway, but here, with the functions of the tire center and everything, we were unable to do that, but secondarily, we did, we were allowed to put some planters. And so the focus of these planters, not only cooperating with the corner piece as it wraps around the pilasters of cultured stone, but was to create these points of interest between these landscape islands that you see on the right with the trees. And so as you make your way around the building, the facade continues to be broken up with the landscaping. Again, interacting the building and the site all as one. And kind of in conclusion, this is the elevations, and so what we really kind of tried to focus on is a consistent language and a consistent rhythm throughout the elevations and throughout the, throughout the building overall. And then finishing off with the fuel facility in the northeast corner of the site, and again, talking about the cohesion of the design and the materiality, bringing in what you see at the entry canopy of the columns of the three types of stone, cultured, smooth-face, and then the soldier coursing on top, bringing that all together. And so that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jane Albert wishes to testify on this application.
Good evening, Jane. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jane Albert, 6628 North Savio Way in Meridian.
Thank you.
So I must reiterate my opposition to the project, and my acting as a liaison with Costco for my neighbors to discuss the design concepts in no way implies that I've changed that view, but in this endeavor, I represented both those who are in favor of the project as well as those who are opposed. For each, in each case, we desired a building and grounds that are compatible with the neighborhood and offer as much screening of the warehouse building and fuel center as possible. Our process was that I held two neighborhood meetings and presented views of 20 different elevations of Coscos from around the country submitted by neighbors and sourced by me. Neighbors commented on each, as well as making general comments with their suggestions and concerns. We presented the information to Costco at their neighborhood meeting held on August 14th, as well as posting our original sheets for others to review and comment upon at that meeting. The sheets were then scanned and provided to Costco electronically, in addition to the information and comments that they received on various design elements that they presented in the meeting. I also submitted them on the record. After I disseminated all of the views of the design elements, including those presented by Costco to the list of neighbors with which I communicate on the project, requesting input from those who are not able to attend the Costco neighborhood meeting. At that first meeting, I think that Costco noted on their signups, there were about 40 people. I represented about 77 that are on that list, so I would say, given the crossover, we're probably talking about 100 people who presented input for us or were given the opportunity. At the second Costco neighborhood meeting on September 11th, they came with an updated landscape and building design, and again solicited feedback from neighbors, which was provided. After incorporating that feedback and design and materials, Costco provided us with the update drawing substantially the same as those provided to the city. I then again selected, solicited input from our, our neighbors and communicated those to Costco, and those comments are included with their submission of the design. In closing, overall, the neighbors are appreciative of the opportunity to truly participate in the process with additional neighborhoods meeting, meetings as called for by the council, the required noticing expanded by the council, and Costco increasing their outreach to those who testified during the prior proceedings. We know that these steps didn't have to be made. We know that Costco really stepped up and listened to the neighbors, and we're very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Rich Burke has also signed up to testify.
Well, Mayor, Counsel, my name is Rick Burke, 6092 North Santa Rita, Meridian, A3646.
Thank you.
I really don't have too much more to add to what Ms. Alberts said, but I just wanted to continue and voice my opinion, opposition to the project. It's probably going to go anyway, but with strong opposition to the surrounding neighborhood. We, we still feel strongly that this Costco, as much as we all love Costco.
So this, this hearing is about the design?
Design review.
Yes.
Yeah, well, design review or not, I still want to, you know, I'm in strong opposition to it, so there you have it.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks for hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Rick?
Rick?
Are you open to a question? Rick, thanks for being here. I think you've been at every meeting that we've had on this particular subject, so I appreciate you turning out, recognizing that we're talking about the design. As someone who's been involved in this process, I'm just, I'm curious, is, is the design better meet kind of what the neighborhood was looking for from your perspective? Understanding you're opposed to the development, but the topic here tonight is the design. As someone who's been here for every meeting, I'm just curious if you'd be willing to provide some perspective about the design and the layout of the building.
Well, it's, you have to give kudos to Costco, to, and their folks who worked with them with the design. It's much better than what the original plan was. I have to, you know, give credit where credit's due. They've been very gracious in putting up with us and, and working with us on the design as well as the concern of it going in to begin with, so yeah, kudos to Costco for the design.
Madam Mayor, fill up. Were there, are there any elements that they haven't included that, that you wish would have been included or something that was taken out that you really liked?
Well, I think it is what it is. It's, Costco's have tried to do their part, but.
Fair enough. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There were no other signups, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I would like to open it up and see if there's anyone who wishes to provide testimony that did not sign up. Okay. Seeing none, would you like to close? The applicant?
I don't believe there's much to add. I appreciate the kudos, and I would just reiterate, you know, much what Jane and Rick said, that everybody tried their best to work together, and I think we did pretty well, you know, considering, you know, many folks are still opposed to the project, and we understand that, but I felt like we were able to bridge that gap and do something constructive and creative, and I think it was a pretty positive process. With that, thank you.
Thank you, and I would just like to thank Jane, it's, for your coordination and being able, you and Rick, to set your opinion about the project itself aside and look at, at this as an opportunity to, how many communities actually are asked to design their Costco? Probably not many. To the applicant, I appreciate you having the understanding that there, the emotions are still there and still high, but reaching out and listening to what the, the neighbors said. I think it's a great statement that this is not a full house because of those efforts that you offered to be heard, so thank you for that. Counsel, any questions for the applicant or those that testified?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Unless anybody does, thanks for sticking with us. Oh, man. I move we close the public hearing on item 9F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve H. 2018-0066.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve item 9F. Any discussion from counsel? Any discussion from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Kind of echoing what Madam Mayor has already said, but thank you for your cooperation, and I know that on both sides, this has been a really tough and emotional kind of rollercoaster for, for all of you involved. And thank you for, for being here, for coming back and, and, and working together to come up with a, with a resolve. It is a much nicer building, and, you know, people were hard on us for making you go back and redesign it, but I really like what you came back with a lot better than what you had before. And so working with the neighbors obviously helped, and the landscaping is beautiful. Hopefully, all your flowers are purple all year round. Love it. That's all. Sorry. They are.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
I wanted to take a second and thank Jane and Denise LaFever, who's not here this evening, usually she is, and other familiar faces in the front row who have been here, Rick and others who have been here expressing concern and support of this project. I think this is a perfect example of what can happen when there's collaboration involved between development, development and, and local neighbors. If there's one thing I've learned since I was elected to sit in this seat is that, you know, we're never always going to agree. That's just something that's, it's very difficult to attain, but I always strive for discussion and, and open door policy, and I believe that there's always common ground that can be attained, and, and I believe in this, this effort. I want to thank COSCO and the local neighbors for their collaboration and what they've been able to do to come out with an end result like this. So thank you so very much, and hopefully those who are listening and watching can learn from this, and hopefully we can continue this type of collaboration going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Not Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Thank you again.
Good job, yes.
Okay, item 9G is under community development, a discussion of the findings and facts and conclusions of law. Mr. Nary?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, before you are the findings that were directed after the public hearing on this matter back in September. Subsequent to that, the, there was a request to, for the staff to review the record of this case and provide other findings that were discussed at the time as part of the public record that the council could consider if they wished. There would need to be some process and emotion to reconsider if you would like to do that. Your option is, tonight is to either approve the findings as presented to you in the, in the staff reporter in your agenda, or to, if you want to consider the options, we can discuss how to do that if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay, thank you. Counsel? Ms. Mylum.
I move to reopen the public hearing for the sole purpose of considering additional conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion from counsel. Okay, I have a motion to reopen the public hearing in particular to approvals or findings for approval. Correct. Ms. Mylum. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
For findings or for conditions?
For conditions.
Conditions.
For conditions.
The sole purpose of considering-
Conditions.
Conditions.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Mr. Nary, that will be set forward for-
So, Madam Members of the council, we, we would recommend setting this for a new hearing date so that we can properly notice. We can note, because it's been on the agenda, we can move it forward as a simple agenda item, or if your direction would be that we send out notice, we can send out notice as we did previously. We can send it out to 300 feet or 1,000 feet, whatever you'd like. If you want the signs to be put back up and request the applicant to do that, we could do the newspaper notice as we do normally here. If your preference is to do that full notice, we could do that. It would take approximately a month, Mr. Clerk, for all of that timing wise?
Correct. The soonest we could get it on, if we did a full notice, would be the November 20th hearing.
And full notice would be the publication, the required publication type?
Correct.
If you were to do amended process of reaching out to those that provided testimony or signed up, what would that look like?
That would simply be, I believe, the discretion of the council, Madam Mayor, in terms of timeline and timeframe.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'd hate to push this for the applicant out till Thanksgiving. Can we ask him if now there's open? If he has a date preference or, and then we could figure out how we can-
Sure.
Make that-
Yes.
Make it-
Mike McGurdey, managing member of Timber Creek Recycling, 7695 South Lucas Grove, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Madam Mayor, members of council, I would prefer, like you were saying, if we could move this to like the next week or the week after, would be preferable to move it out to the 20th would be definitely keep pushing our process back to try and get things in motion with DEQ and the Health Department. So I'd prefer to try and, you know, have it as early as possible if we could.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
One question. How long would this process be pushed back if we were just to send out notices via mail?
Madam Members of the council, I would recommend at least two weeks in order to print the, the mailings and then get them out in the mail and then give those that receive the notice adequate time to respond to that.
November 7th?
Three weeks.
That's three weeks.
So our next meeting is October 23rd. There is no meeting the following week. It's a fifth Tuesday, and then after that, the next is November 7th.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just a suggestion then for council is to maybe potentially schedule a special meeting on that fifth Tuesday to address this. I don't think it's appropriate for us to push it out any longer. If we can get information out within two weeks, have a special meeting solely around this particular item, not be too time consuming for everybody's schedule. Because this body wants to reconsider this, we've already had rendered a decision because we wanted to reconsider this, I don't think it's appropriate to continue it out any longer than what it takes for staff to be able to get the information out. If staff can get it out within two weeks, then let's meet within two weeks on this.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess one question for the applicant is if he's already had a chance to review the conditions. And if he has, if he's in-
I don't think we can do that.
I don't think we should do that. Madam Members of the council, so two weeks is less than the 30th, so that means, because what we, notices won't go out till tomorrow. So if, if you're comfortable with that, I mean, that's certainly adequate, because again, we could do agenda notice. I'm more hesitant, the more, the better. So if you wanted the 30th for a special meeting, that'd be fine. I mean, we could request, the two most ways that people see these things is from the notices that go to their homes and the signs that are on the property. And we find lately that many find it on next door, but I don't know about this area of the city. There's a lot of next door participants in that area. So those are the three ways to see it the most. So definitely the mailed notice will be helpful, but it doesn't hit everyone.
And Madam Mayor, if I may interject here, the, the standard timeframe or the timeframe required by the law on a traditional public hearing, when we have a first time public hearing coming before the council, is 15 days. The law requires that it's a 15 day notice. So that is what the law requires when it's the first time coming before the council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
But in this instance, we don't have to notice at all. This is just, and we could do it next week if we sent out notices tomorrow.
You're more vulnerable if you don't. If you, if you set it that short, I, I, I think it's more concerning to me to do it like that. That's why I suggest that you send out notice and notice it in a better fashion, so at least people have the opportunity to participate.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
Mr. Nary, would you recommend putting a sign on the property?
That, because it's not the applicant's choice, the applicant would have to consent to do that. We couldn't order them to require it on the property. It is a, it is a much more visible way to do it. If you want to order full noticing, that is a normal course. This one's a little unusual, so again, the applicant would have to consent to doing that. And there is generally a cost to that, so.
Do it next week.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Given that we're considering a special meeting anyway, does it have to be on a Would anyone be more comfortable with Thursday, the 1st? I'd just assume go with our previous decision, but.
I'm not opposed on, for a meeting on the 1st.
My mom is visiting.
Special meeting.
I have no idea.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. I, I believe we have a commission meeting that night?
Do.
And put the commission in a spot-
Yes, the 1st and 3rd, right? You do.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question for you or Mr. Nary or Sonya or CJ. Counsel can meet conference room A and B-
City Hall.
At City Hall.
Hold.
Or, or the commission can meet in conference room A and B or in, I mean, I feel like that we're over complicating this. Counsel wants to meet for a special meeting on, on the 1st, you can find a location. There are plenty of spaces in this building for us to meet.
Madam Mayor.
Complicated.
I would like to recommend the 29th.
It's not enough time though. It needs to be 15 days.
And, and Madam Mayor, if I may respond and, and put some clarity to what Councilmember Cavanagh said, absolutely council and/or commission can meet anywhere. There are some challenges that are presented with live streaming meetings in other locations than this room that we have found in meeting in other locations. Just to, if, if another room is selected, that does present some challenges in terms of live streaming and, and recording for the, for the public record.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
I think we can meet here, and planning and zoning can meet in conference room A and B.
Again, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Burton, it does present some challenges for live streaming and, and getting the record for the meeting that happens in that location. Just as a point to consider.
Gila.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We're, I think we're wildly off. Suggest it's the 7th or the 30th. We do stuff on Tuesday nights. Let's do a Tuesday night. If it's, if the 7th, what would make me lean to the 7th is it's got to be fair to the applicant to get time to look through it and understand what this may or may not be comprised of. The 6th is election day, so it's Wednesday, the 7th?
Oh, 7th, okay.
And then if we're, if the intent of getting notice to the public is so they receive it and can act on it, then let's give them that time. So I lean to the 7th, but if, if the council wants to go the 30th, I'm fine with that as well. But pick one of those two and let's go.
Mr. Borton.
I will make a motion, and just, we'll get discussion going, to continue this for that hearing on H. 2018-0042 to November 7th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Clarification then, the re-noticing cost, is that borne by the applicant, or is that going to be borne by the city?
City.
Us, Madam Mayor, I would think we would absorb that cost.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess I would like to just make sure that includes the posting of the sign if the applicant agrees, is agreeable to that. I don't think he should bore any expense for this.
Okay. Post the site? So the applicant has agreed to post the site, and any cost associated would be borne by the city.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess I just want, one last time clarification on this, since I'm going to be absent on the 7th. Counsel will either approve additional conditions or it will be approved the way it has already been approved, and those are the only two options. Is that correct?
Yeah, Madam Members of the council, you, you're not reconsidering your decision. You're only considering whether additional conditions were to be included in this amendment to the development agreement.
If.
If any. So you've, you've made a motion for one, and you have a, a list of other ones that were discussed. So it's one, some, or none, so. But not the ultimate decision you've already rendered.
Perfect, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I guess my concern with posting it on the site is people see hearing and the date, and they will potentially assume that we are rehearing the entire process and not stop and read the final print, that we are only considering potential conditions. So I, I would be hesitant to post it on the site.
Good point.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I, that's a great point. Good intentions, but maybe that causes more problem.
Madam Mayor.
Confusion.
Mr. Palmer.
And that's going to be the result of any kind of noticing that we send out on it.
I, I think the wording can be that reopening this hearing is for conditions of approval. I, I guess that the clerk and our attorney can find the appropriate language to make sure that those sideboards are on.
Huge.
And Madam Members of the council, most of our intention in the wording of any of these is to drive them to the application that's in front of you so that they do see specifics. There's generally never enough room on a sign to tell them everything that could be considered, so that's the intent. I agree that there certainly will be misunderstandings, but there is often, so I think the best we can do is at least trying to get the notice out there.
Thank you.
So the, the motion was for the 7th of November. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, this will be set for November 7th with the appropriate sideboards of discussing conditions of approval.
And Madam Mayor, and members of the council, just to be clear, we will send out mailed notices to everyone within that 1,000 foot radius that received the original notice, plus we will cross-reference that with anyone that provided testimony and their address and mail it to them, and then obviously next door as well, if there are any neighborhoods down in that area, just like we did before.
Thank you.
Try to hit as many people as we can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 9H is, Mr. Nary.
Thank you, Madam Members of the council. Item 9H is the real estate purchase agreement between the city and the MDC in regards to the Old City Hall project. It has been signed and approved by the Board of MDC. This is to move the ownership of that building. Potential or projected closing date is February 28th of 2019. We have informed Mr. Ritter that this is in the works. He's on the Board of MDC as well, so he is aware of that. We'll work with him between now and then on that transition. We have been in talks with him for about a month, so he's aware of that, and he knows his tenants are aware of it, so we'll work with him on that and getting that done. The target for MDC to have the building demolished is March, April of 2019, so it's kind of in line with that, and that was the reason for the delay in the transfer.
Any questions for Mr. Nary? Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we accept the real estate purchase agreement between the city of Meridian and the Meridian Development Corporation for the property located at 33 East Idaho Avenue in Meridian, also known as the Old City Hall.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item 9H. Is there any discussion? Are you none? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9I is approval of the collective labor agreement between the city of Meridian and Local 4627. Mr. Nary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After a very robust six-month process of putting this labor agreement together, we have an agreement that was ratified by the union to the members of the union's executive team, Tyler Roundtree, the union president, as well as Grant Hamilton, their lead negotiator in this last, this year's round of negotiations, are both present and did want to make comment. Before they come up, I would like to say this has been a very, very active participatory process on both sides in this go-around. This is my eighth agreement for the city, and this was one that had a tremendous amount of give and take, a lot of discussion, a lot of very good work that was done in trying to develop this contract and put together something that was reasonable. And I really commend both these two gentlemen for leading that effort for their members, and I think it was a success for both of us. So, I was appreciative of them, and that's all I want to add.
Thank you. Tyler, Grant, thank you for joining us.
It's been a busy day today.
I know.
A little on the busy side. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I would like to echo the comments that Mr. Nary made. Thanks to Councilmember Palmer for taking time away from his family to meet in the evenings, taking time away from his work to meet during the day. Councilmember Borton filled in as to Councilmember Burnt. I really feel like the conversation that we had at the beginning of the year and my promise to this council was upheld. We got through the process, and it was pretty good with both sides working through a lot of the stuff that was brought in front of us. Certainly, we are really looking forward to working together collaboratively as we move forward in the future. I also would be remiss to not say we appreciate everything councils have done for us in the past and what the current council is doing for us in the future, and we are, just like you guys, patiently awaiting the arrival of Station 6. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grant, do you want to add anything? No? Just to reiterate what's already been said, we appreciate everyone coming to the table to have dialogue, and where that dialogue is brought us is to act on this collective labor agreement. I would like to extend my thanks to our council representatives who have participated in this process, certainly to the union representatives and to the union who has voted on this as well. So, thank you for your leadership. Counsel? Yes, Mr. Palmer.
I just want to say how appreciative I am of the education that I received about knives, flashlights, and worms.
That's a short list.
Very short. No, it was, I mean, having anybody who knows me, me growing up and my attitudes towards unions, it was very refreshing to be able to have the conversations that we did in the cordial manner that they took place, and I learned a lot, and can definitely say that my attitude has changed. And I hope that there's others around the country like you guys that make it easier on those of us close-minded conservatives to be able to enjoy that kind of experience, so thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I'll just be real quick. Thank you Battalion Chief Roundtree for your leadership, and thank you, Grant, for your leadership as well. Night and day difference just goes to show what happens when we can come together and come to an agreement. So, thank you so much for all that you did.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I'll be brief, but it's rare that we get such distinguished members in our audience like Mr. Roundtree, Mr. Hamilton. Gentlemen, appreciate your work and the union's work on this. I think negotiations are sometimes like city council meetings. There's arguments, there's heated discussions, there's passion, and at the end, we all try and do what's best for our city, and I think that this is another case of both sides working to do what's best for the city. I'd also like to thank Mr. Nary and the chief for their work. Some of us on council sit on the outside, and we hear information and appreciate everybody always working together to come to a positive resolution, and I don't think that would happen if this was a one-sided conversation, so thanks to all of you.
Ditto.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I would like to echo what everyone has said. Thank you so much for the very diligent work on both sides. I am so excited to be the new liaison, and I have made a note that I need to learn about knives, flashlights, and worms, along with many other things. I had planned to make the motion to approve, but since Mr. Palmer did all of the work, I would pass the honor on to him if he would like it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve the collective labor agreement between the city of Meridian and Local 4627.
Second. I have a motion and a second, and just a special note in the record that that was Mr. Palmer that did that motion.
Is it like a newspaper headline, I think?
There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate.
Item 10A is ordinance 18-1793. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this ordinance by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Meridian, ordinance number 18-1793, and ordinance file H. 2018-0052, Fairborn subdivision, for the rezone of a parcel of land located in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 21 and the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 22, and a parcel located in the three-east half of Section 21 and the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 22, township four north, range one west, Boise, Meridian, city of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification from R. 15 Medium-High Density Residential, R. 8 Medium Density Residential, and CC Community Business Zoning Districts to CC Community Business 6.48 Acres and R. 8 Medium Density Residential 62.41 Acres, zoning districts in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this read by title. Would anyone like to hear it read in its entirety? Are you none? Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Move that we approve ordinance number 18-1793 with this engine of rules.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve item 9A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, must carried. Any items under 11? I just had a couple reminders that the Meridian Star Awards will be tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. We have, we had a number of nominations for these awards in recognition. We would love to have council join us tomorrow evening here at City Hall. We do have an unplugged town hall on October 24th, a week from tomorrow, at 6:30 at Lakeview Golf Club, and we're taking questions right now from our citizens on what topics they would like to be addressed. And trunk-or-trade on October 25th starts at 6:00 PM. It will be right out in front, and we'll expect a lot of ghosts and goblins and little munchkins running around, trick-or-treating. So, come join us for that fun as well. And if you know anyone that would like to have a trunk, we would encourage you to have them reach out to our Parks Department. They certainly are still willing to take as many of our community partners as wants to have a trunk and bring lots of candy. So, with that said, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206-1A and 1D. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?